I'd like to reconvene the meeting that we started. And according to my notes, Ms. Lawless was speaking and said that she needed another half an hour of time to finish her statement.
Okay, well, Councilor Sugar commence where we left off.
Okay. Mr. Muon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we need to re swear the witness, Mr. Jenkins?
Not necessary for me. This is necessary for you.
Ms. Lawless, do you understand you're still on oath?
Yes, I do.
Okay. When we were last, when you were last testifying, you testified about the transition between Ms. Estrella and Jessica Thomas. And you were talking about how you were busy at that time before Ms. Thomas actually joined your office. When did Ms. Thomas start?
January 26th. Oh, sorry, January 26th, December 2015.
And during the interview process, did she reveal anything about relations, her, any relatives in relations with the town of Freetown?
Well, she mentioned that Jack Healy's grandfather and her grandfather were friends.
And in the first few weeks of work, did you need to train her in any way?
Yes.
What did you, what did you do to train her?
Well, she had no form of physical experience, so we trained, starting out with, we trained on accounts receivable and accounts payable and then payroll, we went into payroll. Those were going to be basically her three main functions.
And was she able to learn those functions to your satisfaction?
Yes. Again, I stated that my only issue was that I would say to her, "You need to take some notes," she would use my notes. And I said, "You need to take your notes," and she kept saying, "I got a good memory." I said, "Okay."
Did you set any ground rules with her with regard to who she could talk to for, to get information about her job?
Well, I was very adamant about the fact that I did not want her to pursue information with Cheryl Estrella, the former clerk, or to go to Christina. I wanted her to get directions, especially with regard to her duties and responsibility from me, and I had my reasons for that.
And what were those reasons?
Well, there, you know, I felt as though that the first hearing was based on false accusations that Great Dale and I, because I percent, had to come from Cheryl Estrella.
What hearing are you referring to?
The first hearing that was held on April 50, 2014.
And what did you, what were your ground rules for Ms. Thomas?
Well, just that, you know, if she had any questions to ask me, if I needed to ask Cheryl for questions, that I would go ask her myself, if anything needed to be clarified.
And in February, was her performance meeting your expectations?
Yes, absolutely.
And did she follow your instructions?
Yeah, she had a little difficulty with, you know, we were doing some, looking for accounts, and she had difficulty. And she ended up going over to Cheryl. And I realized she had gone over to Cheryl because she had the documents in her hand. And it was almost as though, looking back, as though she wanted me to see what she had the documents in her hands. She went over to the office and she came back. And I said, "Where did you go?" She goes, "Oh, I went and asked Cheryl where those accounts were." And I said, "I showed you how to look up the accounts." She says, "Well, I couldn't find them. They didn't give me the right answer," whatever. Anyway, I turned around, I went and found the answers for her. And when she came back, she said Cheryl wouldn't give her the information that she wanted anyway. And I said, "Well, there you go."
And did you talk to her about this?
Yes, I did.
What did you say?
I said that I asked you not to go over. Please don't do that again.
And what'd she say?
She was okay with it at first, and then there was another incident. I think she came back and said to me, "I can speak to whoever I want, whatever I want, about whatever I want." I said, "Well, you can speak to whoever you want, but not with regard to work issues."
And what did you make of her attitude?
Well, she was like talking to my daughter, my granddaughter. She was a little bit fresh. And I had a conversation about it with, I went to, I went to the town administrator, Jack, on March 11th, the first time. March 13th, there was another incident with respect to the jeans. And again, I didn't tell her right away in the morning when we first came in about the jeans.
What do you mean by the jeans?
Well, she came in Friday morning. We're allowed to wear jeans, but these jeans were designer jeans, and these designer jeans are designed with several holes in them. And when Cheryl, the former clerk, was working in the office, we had had a complaint about the jeans that, and this was during the week, but they were dress pants and jean material. So, and I didn't want the issue, so I said to her, I said, "Look, Jessica." I said, "You can wear jeans," and this was about 10 o'clock, not 8 o'clock in the morning. Jessica said, "Listen, you can wear jeans on Friday." I said, "But please, don't wear jeans with holes in them." She said to me, "People tell me I dress too good for this place." I said, "Jessie can, you can wear jeans, but not with holes in them."
And why did you make that rule?
Because I was afraid to have problems and get a complaint from someone. When it happened to Cheryl, it was Ally who came down and said somebody had registered a complaint. So, again, I said to her, and I used that. Finally, I said, "Listen," I said, "I'm telling you this because I've had an issue before, and I don't want you to have an issue." I know how Cheryl got upset when they complained about her. I said, "That's what it's all about." I said, "I understand what it's like to be young." I said, and she kept telling me they designed the jeans and going on and on. So, anyway, I finally let it go, and she did do it again. But when I went to see Jack, I addressed both those issues with him. And he said to me, "To make sure she understands who the boss is and she's not to go over your head." And I didn't use those terms with her, but I did tell her, when I spoke to her, that she was not to go over my head. And I did say to her at one point, she came back and said something about, "I know why people don't like you when I'm here." And she, she said, well, she said, "I think that needed to be said." And I said, "Well, that's disrespectful." And I said, "Maybe, you know, I didn't set boundaries between treasurer, collector, and clerk, and I should have, but going forward, I really don't think I deserve those responses." And I was very nice to her about it. And then again, I noticed she became more and more testy as the days went on. And on the 19th of March, I went to see Jack again.
What'd you see him about?
I asked him to clear the air. I wanted to have a meeting, sit down with the three of us. I thought this was a non-issue that could have been settled with a 15-minute meeting.
What issue are you referring to?
Well, everything with regard to her going to Christina, going to Cheryl, you know, going to Cheryl, that it could have been ironed out with a simple conversation.
And...
And I was told from Jack, "Let me know if it happens again," and the meeting never happened.
Well, did you meet with him on March 19th?
I met with him, yes.
Okay. And how did that, how did it go? Was Mr. Healy supportive?
Yes, he listened to what I had to say. And at one point, he said to me, I don't know if it was on that day or the 19th, he said to me, "I can't believe she's got that in her." And I said to myself, "Well, maybe that just came out wrong." You know, it wasn't like, "I can't believe she said that to you. I can't believe she's got that in her."
Now, did Mr. Healy say that he was going to talk to Jessica, or that he left that up to you, or what?
No, he let, he said to me, "Let me know if that happens again."
Now, at that time, did Mr. Healy talk to you about any, any performance concerns he had about your performance?
No. Not that I can remember.
Did he criticize you in any way about your handling of Ms. Thomas's...
No, he endorsed, he supported me. He said, "Just let her know. Let her know who's the boss." And, you know, don't let it happen again.
Okay. Now, you asked for a meeting, what, with the three of you, Mr. Healy, Ms. Thomas, and you?
Yes, yes.
And did Mr. Healy say he'd make that happen?
No, he just said to me, "Let me know if it happens again."
Okay. And did you ever have a meeting of the three of you?
No, we did not.
And did Mr. Healy ever ask for the three of you to get together?
No, he did not.
Did Mr. Sadik or any member of the Board of Selectmen approach you in that timeframe to discuss your work performance?
No, they did not.
Now, did anything happen between March 19th and March 23rd?
Between Jessica and myself?
Yes.
No.
Well, how did, how did the, how did it go?
Well, I don't really remember, but...
Nothing out of the ordinary?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
She met your professional needs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What happened on March 24th between you and Jessica?
On March 24th, at about 10:04, I was explaining to Jessica, Jessica was going to help Christina with some tax payments. And Jess, Christina had already batched them and run tapes on them. So, I said to her, "I know that the tapes are already on there, and it's too late to start entering work, but going forward, what I'd like you to do is I'd like you to enter the work and then run the tapes on it, which would be more efficient for, better audit trail."
What do you mean by running the tapes?
Well, they had had an issue a few days before. They were, they don't match the checks. Sometimes it's three checks with one bill, and everything was messed up, especially in busy time. Christina's system works if it's a slow time, but when it's busy, she separates the checks and the work. And it's much easier if you keep everything together, enter everything in, and then run the tapes, get your report from the system, which tells you the total you should have, and then run your tapes to make sure, run the tapes on the bills and the checks to make sure they match. That was it. And when I finished saying that to her, Christina happened to come in the room, and she asked Christina if it was okay that she did it that way. And I said, I said, "I've already addressed it with Christina, and now I address it with you. This is the way I want it done going forward." She says, "I don't like the way you just spoke to me. I'm going upstairs." I was like, "What?"
Why did you react that way?
Well, because it was, to me, it was, I was shocked. "What do you mean, the way I talked to you?" So, I said, "Okay, well, I got to go up and see Kim. I'm going with you." I said, "Let's resolve it." I wanted to resolve this with Jack a few days before that. I wanted to iron out, clear the air.
What did you make of her asking Christina if it was okay to do it the way you wanted her to do it?
Say that again?
What did you make of Jessica, Ms. Thomas, asking Christina whether it was okay for her to do it the way you wanted her to do it?
Well, that she was asking, she was going over my head to Christina and saying, "Is that okay?" Well, you know, I had just gone through, spent several hours trying to figure out the mess that was left from the due date. And I had allowed Christina to do it her way and put up with it for a long time, but after going through this, Jessica also alluded to the fact that this is the way they had done it at the bank at the time. And I said, "Well, this is the way I think it should be done as well. When you have one check and three bills, and now you're posting payments, and you get everything out of order, and now you've got a problem, and it doesn't, that doesn't match because all the bills and the checks aren't in order, now you've got to try to figure out who goes with who, what goes with what. By keeping everything together before you post, it becomes a non-issue." So, you know, that's the reason why I said, "We've got to change the way we're doing this. This is crazy. It's spend so much time trying to do something simple."
So, where did you go?
Where did I go was probably...
With, did you go with Ms. Thomas upstairs?
Yes, I did.
Where'd you go?
We went up to the Selectmen's office first, and Jack was in there.
Okay. And so who, who did you talk to?
Well, Jessica sat down in front of Ally. Ally picked up the phone. I don't remember if she called Jack first or called, called first, but I know she ended up talking to Paul. I didn't stay there and listen. I went into the town administrator's office and tried to get Jack on the phone because I had already had issues and wanted to make sure he knew what was going on and be able to help, ask for his help with this.
How'd you know Ms. Golds called Mr. Sadik?
Well, because I was out there for a minute. I know she called him. She handed the phone to Jessica. And then I went into the town administrator's office and tried to call him. And there was no answer the first time I called.
And so Ms. Thomas spoke with Mr. Sadik?
Yes, she did.
Remember anything she said?
No, I didn't really, I did not stand there and listen.
Now, did Mr. Sadik or any member of the Board of Selectmen talk to you that night?
Yes. Once, once Jessica got off the phone, I said to Ally, "Would you please call, call back and ask, and get him on the phone so I can speak with him?" So, she did.
But Mr. Sadik didn't ask to speak with you. You asked to speak with him.
No, I asked to speak with him. So, I said to Ally, I said, "Can you put it in the town administrator's office? I wanted to talk to him privately." And I tried, I started to explain what was going on, but he got really upset with me. And I was really nervous. And anyway, he said to me at one point, "Put Ally back on the phone." Well, Ally was at her desk, so I went out and I said, "Ally wants to speak to you." Ally came in the room. She started to put the phone on speaker. He said, I heard him say, "I don't want to speak to her. I only want to speak to you." So, she took it off speaker. I stood there. They only talked for about less than a minute. And when she got off the phone, I said, "Ally, can you tell me what he said?" She said, "I'd rather not."
Did Mr. Sadik ask for your side of the story?
I offered my side of the story, but as I said, I really had difficulty speaking. I was just so upset, and I was blindsided by the whole thing. I was flabbergasted by the, by the whole incident.
Did Mr. Sadik express any concern about the way that Ms. Thomas had been insubordinate over the last few weeks?
No.
And what happened next?
I left that office and I went to, to see Kim.
And who was Kim?
Kim is the town accountant. I had some paperwork. She was going to be out for the next couple of days. I was going up there and give her paperwork. Anyway, I walked into Kim's office, and I told Kim, "I'm really upset." And I told her what happened. I said, "Can I use your phone?" So, I called Jack, and I got Jack on the phone. I said, "Jack," I told him what just happened with Jessica. And I said, "Can you please call Paul and tell him what happened?" I said, "I'm really upset." Jack started to laugh. I said, "Jack, this isn't funny." I said, "I know this guy. He's going to try to fire me over this." I said, "Would you please call him and tell him that I have been talking to you about this and that I asked you to resolve this issue? And he said, "And call me back?" And he said, "Yes, you would." I said, "Call me back on my cell phone because I'm leaving." Kim heard my whole conversation. And I said, "I know, I know what's going down here. And I'm looking at you because I told you this was what was trying to be effected last year when I, when I was brought to a hearing. I told you then that I was in effect going to be replaced by a clerk." And anyway...
You're speaking to Mr. Healy?
I'm, I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to Lisa because I, I met with her shortly after the first hearing. I was upset. I ran into her in the hallway and I asked to speak with her. And I told her of my concerns because I felt as though Cheryl had convinced this board that I was incompetent. She's a master manipulator. And I was really upset. Her name wasn't even mentioned at the hearing, but it did take a genius to figure out where all this information, when I sat down, where it all came from. And, and anyway, it hurt. It was upsetting. And anyway, I thought this, you know, I wanted Jack to call me back, and he didn't. I thought I tried calling him, but our phone records don't show it, so God knows who I called. I've done that before. But I begged him to call me back, but I think I was begging somebody else because I can't find it on our phone records. So, anyway, the next morning, I was really upset, didn't sleep much all night because I couldn't believe that after I got off the phone, I forgot that part, after I got off the phone with the Jack, I said to Kim about being fired over this, and she said, "Well, that would be unfortunate, Diane, because you've done a good job here, and it wouldn't be in the best interest of the town." And anyway, we, I left, I, I left.
Can I ask you a question? Now, besides laughing, what else did Mr. Healy say on the phone when you were in the town hall?
He told me he was in Middleburg. I asked him to come back. He says, "Can't we handle this in the morning?" I said, "Would you please call him and tell him that I tried to address these issues with you, with Jessica?"
And did he, what did he say to that?
He, he didn't say anything. I said, "Will you call him and call me back?" He said, "Yes." Right after I got off the phone, I was on my way out of the town accountant's office. Ally came down to the hallway, and she said to me, "Paul Sadik, the chairman of the board's personnel, said for you not to come in tomorrow." I was like, I went downstairs.
What was your reaction at that point?
I was in a state of shock, but I knew, I knew it was going to come down here. I just felt that, I felt there was something building up to that, when that overdraft leaned it up in Ally's office, and when I get the phone call when I'm at a meeting about the trash bill, the tax bills.
Okay. And so what happened, anything else happen that night?
I didn't hear from Jack that night. I, the next morning, I'm thinking, "Well, I'm going to go in to see Jack because I haven't heard from him." And I had written a statement, which is one of the exhibits, about what had transpired or whatever, and what I said. And, but a printer wasn't working. And so I didn't have a tent to stay, but when I got to the town hall, the email that I sent to myself to print off to Jack wasn't there. So, he went back home, left me there. In the meantime, yes, I downloaded files because I had been accustomed to doing that because I'd been denied access when I was shorthanded to work at the town hall. This was not the first time I've done that until this craziness was, because I just couldn't believe that I was sent home because a clerk who's been working for me for two months makes a complaint, and I get sent home because she doesn't like the way I spoke to her.
So, why did you download files the next day?
Well, I was, number one, I was hoping, I, you know, I was hoping to be able to work from home until this got fixed or whatever.
Why?
Well, because I had things that, I knew what I was responsible for, and then on top of that, I had a debt payment, and I knew my computer at home was not set up to do that, and I needed the information, which became a problem later on. And I addressed that to Jack because he called me before I got the information. He says, "I don't care. Leave. I was treated like a criminal. Leave. Leave now."
Okay. So, why else did you copy those files onto the thumb drive?
Well, to work from home, to be able to work from home.
All right. And then after you were told to leave, what did you do?
I left on foot and went across the street because my husband hadn't come back yet.
How many minutes had you been in the building?
About 15. It was before 8 o'clock. I went in before 8. And when I saw Jessica come in, I, I saw Christina come in, I said, "When you see Jessica," I said, "Please have a go across the hallway till I can leave."
Now, I'm showing you an exhibit. Is 19 the next exhibit, Ms. Golds? What is Exhibit 18?
I don't know.
No, I'm sorry. I'm asking Ms. Lawless. Thank you.
Oh, I don't know.
What is Exhibit 18?
Oh, sorry. There's phone records.
And what is not blocked out?
756?
Who's the phone number? Who has that phone number?
This is Jack's phone number.
And so what does this document show?
325, okay, 325 at approximately 5:45 PM. Like, oh, no, 756?
AM.
AM. Am I supposed to, excuse me, I'm sorry. Am I supposed to just have one of these sheets?
Can you pass that along?
Yeah, okay. No, no, that's, they were stuck together, so I wasn't sure if they're one packet. Now, where is this from? From my cell phone? Oh, okay. He called, he called me to see where I was because I had gone over to the variety store across the street, and I believe he called me to make sure I was okay because I was really upset, and he knows I left on foot.
Okay.
I have 3...
19. 19, okay. What are you showing as Exhibit 18? Is that the...
Exhibit 18 is the timesheet.
Timesheet. Thank you. So, these show your calls with Mr. Healy in the days following?
Yes. There was one at 3:25, 5:43 PM. I received a call from Jack telling me that the board was placing me on administrative leave. That was the 25th on, at 5:43 PM.
Okay. Now, had, did Ms. Golds tell you on the 24th that you had been paid, put on a paid administrative leave or administrative leave of any kind?
No.
Okay. So, after leaving on the 25th, after leaving the building on the 25th, when did you first learn that you had been put on administrative leave?
3:25, 5:43 PM. I received a phone call from Jack.
And what did he say at that point?
He said, "The board is placing you on paid administrative leave, pending an investigation and a hearing."
Now, did, at any time, did Mr. Healy ask for your side of the story of what happened the day before?
No, he knew my side of the story.
How'd you know that?
Well, because we, we had several meetings over it.
But he wasn't there on the 24th. I mean, how, did he know what happened on the 24th from your perspective?
No, I don't believe so, not on the 24th. I don't know if he was in the building or not. No, he wasn't there because that's where he went upstairs. The 27th, I received a call again from Jack. Couple of them that night.
Okay. We'll talk about that in a second. I just wanted to talk to you about one, on the 23rd, excise taxes were due on that date. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And do you recall talking to Jessica about the way that she would prepare her work that day?
No. I don't have so many notes there.
Okay. Do you recall insisting that she would, that deposits would not be made until the work was posted?
Yeah, that was what we were talking about earlier, that, that we were going to enter the work and then do the deposit, same, same issue, basically.
Okay.
That we were talking about before.
What happened on the 27th? Mr. Healy called you?
No, I got a call that night, and it was the night that the chief delivered the letter.
What day of the week was that?
That was a Friday night.
When did the chief deliver the letter?
It was Friday night.
Uh-huh. After dinner?
Yes.
And what, what did you think when the chief of police came up to your door?
Well, I was expecting that Jack had called me earlier that day and asked me to let him know when I was going to be available to get the letter. So, I called him back. He called me back. But while I was waiting for the chief to deliver the letter, Jack told me that the board wasn't going to have me back, that there may be a payday for me.
And, but you did work after that, didn't you?
I worked from home.
Yeah.
I worked from home at that point. I was told in one of the letters that I received that I wasn't to do anything unless, I was told to get back the flash drives, and I wasn't to do anything until it was under the direction of the town administrator.
Did you get the flash drives back?
I gave the ones I had. I know they said it was three, but it must have been an O1 because I don't know where that one is. I know I made copies before, but I, I, you know, they said it was to me, and I haven't been able to get those out. But I gave back two of the three that I had.
And... Why did you go to work on the twenty-fifth?
Well, because I said I had a debt payment due, I wanted to be able to work from home. I, I just couldn't believe it. I felt like I was a criminal. I didn't know what I had done wrong to be sent home and stripped of everything because a clerk who'd been here for two months with no municipal experience has now got my job. I didn't abuse this girl, I didn't, you know...
But you did perform work?
Yes, I did.
And Mr. Healy asked you to make certain transfers?
Yes, he did.
And did you do all those transfers?
Yes, I did. The only issue, as he alluded to, was the fact that, you know, the debt payment, because I did not, I was not able to retrieve that information. I knew it was gonna be an issue, because I didn't have any of the paperwork at home. I didn't know the amounts, I didn't have anything there. And literally, I had to do it blind, because I didn't have any of the paperwork. Basically, I think Kim, maybe he sent me some information, or he did send me some information on it, when they were notified when the debt payment was, because I just sat there and waited to be told what to do.
And did the town seem satisfied by the, you satisfied by the, the work that you did at their request while you were on administrative leave?
Yes, except like I said, with the frustration of that day, which I expected, but yes, I believed that they were happy with what I did.
You were never told otherwise?
No, I wasn't.
Now, on one occasion, you were asked to produce some codes?
Passcode, yes.
What were those codes? Or did you, what did you understand them to be?
Well, the, the bank codes, all the bank codes that I have, which is, I talked to the bank, I talked to...
Who did you talk to?
I talked to a few of the bankers, and they said, absolutely do not give up your passcode. It's a violation, I know it's a violation of the national general law with respect to the duties and responsibility of the treasurer. It's something that's just not done, that would be like, uh, when anybody takes over, which you ended up doing, even though I'm supposed to still be the treasurer, when, when somebody opens an account, you have to, you know, disregard those, and you have to have new passwords, you don't give somebody, some of those accounts actually have my social security number attached to them, my personal information attached to them. I don't know why they do that, but some of them pass my personal information when they open the account. So my social is on some of them. Don't ask me why they do that, but they do hold you accountable, as they say. If that money ends up in East Mongolia, it's your responsibility, it's on you.
And you're, in fact, still the treasurer of this town, aren't you?
In name only, but maybe not.
Okay, now, how would you characterize your relationship with vendors?
Well, I've had pretty good relationships with vendors, even though that's not what it says here.
Can you give an example?
Well, I've been dealing with some of these bankers for over twenty years. I deal with Rockland Trust, I dealt with Bristol County Savings, I have a list here, but I can't find it. I dealt with UniBank, I knew Betty Clark from, she was a tax collector, and, she was a tax collector at one time for the city of Fall River, and became, he became a banker. Denise was a former assistant treasurer, so I've known her for over twenty years.
At any time prior to March twenty-fourth, did any member of the board of selectmen or Mr. Healy talk to you about concerns about any relationships of the way that you were handling the relationships with vendors?
There was one issue that came up with, that he questions on that, with Monica from Maya. I had, I had two issues with Maya.
What is Maya?
Maya is Massachusetts inter-local, like an agent for our health insurance. And on one occasion, on one occasion, I, Cheryl was on vacation, and she had downloaded a brochure for dental, and the dental plan said that we only had a seven hundred and fifteen dollar benefit instead of a thousand dollar benefit. So anyway, like I said, she was out, and then Matt Johnson from Maya had sent a whole bunch of brochures that also said we had a seven hundred and fifty dollar benefit instead of a thousand dollar benefit. Anyway, I got a taxpayer who's calling me and addressing this, and I emailed Matt from Maya to ask, you know, can you shed some light on this? And he says to me, you're gonna have that, Cheryl. So I went back and forth with him a few times, and finally, I picked up the phone and called him, and I ended up going to his boss, and I had an email from his boss. And I said to, I wrote him back, and I said, thank you for your time and response. I hope that in the future I am not told to ask my clerk for the answer to a health insurance question. My clerk gave the employee a printout that she acquired online stating that the maximum covered will now be seven fifty. I was not aware that any changes were made to our dental plan. I was also not able to confer with the clerk as to why she gave him that particular printout as she is on vacation, nor should that matter. As you are also aware, all the brochures sent to us from Maya were incorrect, stating the maximum benefit of seven fifty per person. Regardless of the situation, I hope in the future I do not have to call three people to get an answer to a simple question. This is the second time I've had to ask a question of Matt Johnson and receive less than appropriate response. In addition, I ask that all correspondence from Maya be copied to my attention in the future. I was not getting emails, I was not getting the information I needed with respect to the health insurance. It was like holy tea. Monica, on the day with the issue about signing up for the RDS program, that happened after we had a hearing here for the new retiree plant. And she got upset with me, because she called me three times the day before the meeting and told me I needed to bring Cheryl to this meeting. Now, what I understand, they work for us, right? I'm the treasurer. She's telling me, called me three times, demanding that I bring Cheryl to this meeting. Now, in order to do so, I would've had to close my office. But I couldn't understand why she's demanding me to bring Cheryl to the meeting. Afterward, she threatened me, she said, well, if you don't bring her to the meeting, we're not gonna help you fill out the forms when we get there. Well, we ended up bringing five people, and there were two people who changed the forms that day, so it was a non-issue. But these are some of the people that I felt as though I was being undermined with. There was no excuse for that kind of behavior for vendors to be telling me who I was supposed to bring to an insurance meeting. The other person I had an issue with, and this is...
Let me just, let me get this, this is exhibit twenty, if you could pass that down to the chairman?
Yep.
That shows some of the correspondence with the inter-local insurance agency.
Did we record the telephone log as number nineteen?
Yes.
I actually, Ally, if you could check, I have, my notes say that we entered exhibit number nineteen at the very end of the last day, emails between Ms. Wallace and the town administrator. Your records show that.
That's my recollection, too.
If I could make a suggestion that matters, what if we logged the cellphone log, it's A today, and the next one's B, and just follow a little sequence? If, if we're unsure about the numbers.
So this is gonna be A?
Well, I'm asking councilors, it's, they are exhibits, I'm just trying to avoid confusion.
Would there be any harm if we just skipped it? Can we just skip that number and...
You know harm for me, I just, my concern was that we had two ninety's.
Yeah, so what if we, could we call the cellphone record twenty-two?
Call it anything you want.
Okay.
We call the cellphone record twenty-two?
Yes, please.
And this one, twenty?
Yes.
And this one, twenty-one?
I have a twenty-one in my hand.
One more thing, that I had a problem with, I'll go back to the kudo file.
All right, briefly.
Okay. I don't know how I can be brief about this one, but if you recall, the hearing was on April fifteenth, and I remember, I have a copy of the minutes here with respect to...
What hearing are you talking about?
The first hearing of April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And I mentioned that, you know, I'm questioning as to why I have to work all these additional hours and... Anyway, two days after, Charlie Stockwell comes in to work on Cheryl's computer, and she had some kind of virus or whatever. And I'm feeling like at this point that I can't say a word, because if there's anything else that goes on, I'm gonna be out the door. Charlie Stockwell carried on in my office for over two, two and a half hours, throwing up profanity left and right, carrying on, laughing and joking with Cheryl. I was trying to check the payroll this holiday weekend. It's went on for over two hours. At one point, he even called a superintendent of school and, and asked him why he had to pay for childcare while he was in my office. But the word part, he's, he's throwing F-bombs all over the place, and it was Cheryl who finally told him, gee, can you stop using profanity? It was obsessive, it was abusive, it was distressful. I had just been to this hearing where I said I needed quiet, it was like, felt like it was done deliberately, and this wasn't the first time. I'd been to town, cornered town administrator on more than one occasion, where Charlie Stockwell had sat in my office and pounded on my desk and asked me, what did I do to this computer? On more than one occasion. He's berated me, belittled me, he came after me when we had a breach on the system, when I went in to work on the thirtieth. We, we had a breach on the twenty-sixth of March, and he couldn't come in till the thirtieth. I went in that day to speak to him about getting things on shared files, because Mrs. Astrala kept telling me she was going out for surgery, that transitioned me wanting her passwords. He laid into me because I let my people post. I told your people before, if we have a breach in the system, you're not to post. I had twelve thousand bills coming in, and the IT person gonna hold us up from March twenty-sixth to March thirty-first, and that was the due date of the bills coming in. So you know that was a busy week.
And did you speak with the town administrator about that?
I went to see him about that, and he said there was nothing he could do, because it was a friend of Paul Seid's. That's the bad, honest truth.
I'd like to show you exhibit twenty-one. Just can you summarize what exhibit twenty-one is for the board?
Well, I have some emails, you know, there's all, all kinds of accusations that I didn't get along with anybody, so I have a kudo file of people who sent me emails when I did a good job. One of them is from a newspaper reporter when I was accused, you know, from the other reporter of not printing it the right way and giving him the wrong information. Well, this is one that was so happy that I answered his email within, I don't know, a day, giving him the information the way he wanted with the gross payrolls. Only this guy did want it fiscal year, which most of them do, rather than calendar year. And he gives me an email. I have two people that were in tax title, who, two or three people here, who commended me for my efforts setting up the payment plans, thanked me for lifting the weight off their shoulders. One of them, it was an account that was, you know, was a problem account, and I addressed that, we fixed that with the town attorney. I have one here from a banker who called me and thanked me. She had had prior dealings with, with Mrs. Howland, and had some issues. And it was obvious that Mrs. Howland was very stressed when she talked to this person, because she was surprised at how Howland addressed her issue. But anyway, that's going into...
And this is exhibit twenty-one, so thank you. Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to backtrack just a little bit on one point, and that was, did your computer work in your first weeks of, of work, when you first joined the town?
It was, it was a rough go. Again, I, for two weeks, Mrs. Howland took mostly vacation days. I spent approximately three days with her. While she was, you know, taking vacation, I had no, I wasn't actually been able to access anything, no monitors at all. Then, when I finally got on, Ally came down and looked at the computer, and she said, you're gonna have to live with it the way it is. Janice came down, took a look at the computer and said, this is ridiculous, and she went upstairs. And I ended up going upstairs right behind her, and I walked in on Ally and, and Janice, and Janice was telling Ally that she needed to get the IT person in to fix my computer, that this was ridiculous, that this is three, four weeks now that I'm sitting here and I can't do anything, because there's a virus in my computer.
And was it fixed in a timely fashion?
It was fixed, finally. But we were already, we were already a month behind. We had just sent out, you know, Cheryl alludes to everything being behind. Dan left. I was almost two months in that office by myself. We had to send out audit letters, which they do every other year, that Maya does, so I had that. I didn't even know what it was about. But all, all the, everyone, retirees and active people, got letters that we had to respond to. They had to send in paperwork, whether it be marriage licenses and everything else. So I had that going on, and I was alone in the office till Cheryl was hired, I think at the end of August, Cheryl was hired.
Anything else that you want to say?
Just that it's, I don't know, it's just been, been a part of two years, it's been very, very stressful, trying to do my job. And, you know, despite, despite everything stonewalled with trying to do the job, being deprived from coming into work, having to maintain normal hours when you're eighty man hours short. In January, I sent Jack another email telling him I was going in on Sunday, oh, you gotta maintain normal hours. How do you do that? I got payroll to do, I had payroll to do, maintain normal hours. When, when I've been alone in the office, Cheryl was pulled out of my office December, started training in clerk's office on December twenty-second. I'm trying to get a tax bill out. I get a floater, but the floater can't do payroll, you know, minimal stuff to do. So I'm alone for the whole month trying to do both jobs. And even then, after, even though I've taken fifty percent of the workload out of the office, Christina is still overwhelmed. I've got the floater, Isabel, helping me on the clerk's side, and I give her up to go help Christina. And Christina's still saying she's overwhelmed, leaving me. And when I request to work extra, which I'm not getting paid for in any way, I'm told I can't come in. It's been continually friendly, trying to set me up to fail.
That's all we have.
Are we done, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. ... I have a few questions, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I won't be very long.
Okay.
Just a few questions. Good evening, gentlemen. I wanna start where your counsel started, which was your municipal experience. What were the circumstances of your leaving Totten?
I resigned Totten.
Was that as a result of employee complaints of harassment against you?
Objection. What relevance could that possibly have to this procedure?
I'll, I'll try to make it clear, a couple of questions, but I think we, you spent a considerable amount of time touting Ms. Wallace's experiments. She gave a press report to the local newspaper indicating that she had been, that she resigned because of complaint of employee harassment.
That's something you can look up on Google. But I don't mind, I don't mind.
Well, the thing is that there's nothing in the notice of hearing, notice of disciplinary hearing.
I think the way we should handle, and this is finally, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask the question, if you object to the question, I'll just move on. So, Ms. Wallace, were you terminated from Totten for engaging in employee... So, Ms. Lawless, were you terminated from Totten for engaging in employee harassment?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
There was no finding whatsoever.
There was a complaint of employee harassment there in town, Totten, correct? Is that a guess?
Yes.
Okay. So your reason for leaving Totten was not that you would receive the promotion, correct?
Well, when I eventually went back to work, it was a promotion.
Okay.
But the reason why, the reason-
Let me ask the questions.
So she's answering your question.
I, I don't think she's answering the question.
She says the reason why.
When you left Totten, did you leave because you were promoted?
Well, I considered going to Norwood a promotion. I was getting some treasurer's experience.
Well, was Norwood a paid job?
No, it was so I could get, so I could get treasurer's experience so eventually to learn a tre, to random treasurer's position.
And you left Totten in, what year was it?
Two thousand and two, I believe.
Okay, and you went to Norwood in two thousand and four?
Somewhere around there.
And you left a paid job to go to an unpaid job?
No, I didn't say that.
And was Totten a paid job?
Yes.
Was Norwood a paid job?
No. But promotions aren't necessarily monetarily, when you can gain experience, to get the job that you really want.
So when you resigned from Totten in two thousand and two and went to Norwood two years later to an internship, you could, you're telling the board you considered that to be a promotion?
I believe when I met with the board, I explained myself thoroughly as to what my history was and what, what had transpired.
Well, you had submitted an employment application to Freetown, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And in your employment application, you said you left the city of Totten because you received a promotion.
I considered that a promotion.
Okay. And all I'm saying is that, so you left a paid position as tax collector. You were out of work for two years. You went to an internship and you considered that to be a promotion?
An experience, yes.
Okay. And what were the circumstances of your leaving East Bridgewater?
Well, I think I said that earlier also. I was hired as an interim. I was out of work. They had placed somebody on administrative leave there. Not many people would have taken that position for, that was an interim. I was hired by the fire chief and the town administrator. I was told when I was hired that I was gonna have to replace my staff eventually, and I took that with a grain of salt. They said because the staff was very loyal to their predecessor. Okay. I said, well, I'm just an interim, I'll do the best I can, blah, blah, blah. And first six months were well, they stayed, gave me rave reviews. Well, I come to find out, they wanted, they wanted me to fire one of, they wanted me to fire the, one of the clerks, and they wanted me to fire the assistant treasurer. Because one of them, especially the assistant treasurer, filed a grievance against this fire chief. And when I wouldn't fire them, they let me go.
So you, you weren't fired for giving false information to a town official?
No, absolutely not.
With respect to the employees that you supervised, you, you talked about Ms. Santos, Mr. Santos, Ms. Estrella, Mr. Sani, and Ms. Thomas. You had occasion to meet with those employees from time to time regarding their job performance, is that right?
I don't really understand your question.
Okay. Well, you met with Ms. Thomas and told her that she shouldn't wear the designer jeans, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, that was in the course of business, yes.
Sure. Well, you met with all of your employees in the course of business-
Right.
-to discuss their personal issues, right?
Right.
Their performance issues, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you give any of those employees a certified letter in advance informing them of the nature of the discussion that we're gonna have?
I, not in advance.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't done as a requiem. It wasn't done as a requiem.
Right. Well, were these employees' attorneys present for the meetings?
No.
Were there court reporters present for those meetings?
No.
Oh, well, there must have been videographers present for the meetings.
Why would there be? It wasn't a hearing. It wasn't disciplinary at all.
And with respect to Mr. Santos, you gave us a couple of letters that were prepared.
Mm-hmm.
Were those letters ever delivered to Mr. Santos?
They were put right in front of him, yes.
Okay.
Right, when, with Mr. Brown sitting there.
Did he sign for them?
No, he did not.
Were they put in his personnel file?
No, they were not.
Okay. Did you put anything in the personnel file for Ms. Thomas?
No, there was no reason to do so.
Did you make any written complaint with respect to anything that Mr. Stockwell did?
No, I did not.
Now, with regard to Ms. Thomas, do you acknowledge that your voice was raised that day?
I, I don't believe it was. No, I don't.
Do you acknowledge that on occasion, from the day of the executive session meeting back last April until you left work, that you, on occasion, your voice was raised?
You know, my voice does carry. I, I'm not gonna say it doesn't. And oftentimes, you know, I, I walk back and forth from one office to the other because, you know, these offices are separate. I'm not perfect, but I know, I know, I, I wasn't, I never treated anybody the way I had been treated by these people.
Well, the question I asked him is, is would you acknowledge that from time to time, from April of last year until you left work, that your voice was-
I don't feel as though I do.
Why haven't finished the question yet? And if you're able to answer yes or no, that would, I'm willing. Do you acknowledge that from time to time, from April of two thousand and fourteen until the day you left work, that you raised your voice towards employees?
I've been told that, but if I did, I didn't realize it.
And would you also acknowledge that during that same time period that you, on occasion, slammed doors?
No, I did not. Absolutely not.
Did you slam your door the day that you-
Absolutely not. That door is very loose. I did not slam the door.
So maybe because of the door being loose, it may have seemed like it banged?
Yeah. You know, I didn't do that intent, I would not do that intention.
Did you follow Ms. Thomas up to the second floor closely?
Well, I know she said that I was towering over her, but that would be impossible to do, I'd have to be seven foot tall. Was I behind her? Yes.
Were you close behind her?
I was on the next, maybe two steps down.
So you were told on the day that I believe it was the twenty-fourth, you related all the conversations you had, you were told not to come to work the next day, right?
Yes.
And you did come to work the next day. And you came to work before the building was open.
Yes.
And before the building was open, you downloaded certain files.
Yes.
And you downloaded them onto a flash drive, right?
Yes.
And those files contained employee information?
As I said, I had remote access in the past, which had all of that information. So this was not new to me.
Right. So the flash drives had employee social security and dates of birth, correct?
And I would have had that if I had remote access as well.
You have to either say yes or no.
Yes, yes.
And the flash drive information that you downloaded had retiree, social security, and birth dates, right?
They could have. I, I really didn't even get a chance to look at what I had downloaded, but they could have.
So your intent, when you, when you took the flash drives, was to insert the flash drive in your personal computer to download that information, right?
As I had done in the past, with work done.
Right. That flash drive is missing, right?
They, they said that there was, I had done, I took two. The one that they're speaking of, I don't know, I don't know where that is. That had to be an old one from some time ago.
So did you take a flash drive from the town at some time in the past?
I think I had one of my own.
Okay.
At least one of those was mine that I gave back, that I had purchased.
Right. Now, there's, there's no question on, at least on a couple of occasions, Mr. Healy asked you for your, your bank codes, right?
Yes.
And you declined for the reasons that you stated to give him the bank codes.
Absolutely.
Now, your counsel spent some time talking about Ms. Thomas's qualifications, and part of what he asked about was whether or not she had received training in employee relations, labor law, employment law, that sort of thing. Do you remember the questions?
I don't remember that, no, I don't.
Okay. Have you received that training?
Probably. I, I don't recall. It's been a while.
So tell the board what the Massachusetts law is on negative information in the personnel file.
I don't know what it is.
Okay. Well, you also said on your direct examination that you told Jessica that she was not able to talk to Cheryl about work issues. Have you said that?
I asked her not to, yes.
Right. And do you know whether or not that's lawful or unlawful?
I don't know. I conferred with the town administrator before I did so, and I had his endorsement.
So you yourself don't know whether or not telling employees not to talk about work is lawful or unlawful?
No, but as I said, I conferred with the town administrator before I did so.
Just give me a second, if you could. Would it be fair to say that you observed performance issues with Ms. Howland?
Make objection. A little mean.
Well, it, from the nature of what you said, it sounds like you didn't get along very well with Ms. Howland.
I only spent three days with Mrs. Howland.
And do you know why it was only three days?
I believe Mrs. Howland, once she realized, and I thought this was brought up before, when Mrs., when Mrs. Howland realized that I was being paid more money than what she was making when she was retiring-
Right.
-she got really upset. And I spoke to the town administrator and let him know that I believe that's why she was upset. But I think at that point, it was too much of a slap in the face for her. And I respected how she felt. It was, didn't make life easy for me, but that's why I feel she did what she did.
Was she in on the plan to set you up to fail?
I don't know.
You did not get along with Mr. Santos, right?
Mr. Santos threatened me because I asked him to look up three checks.
And you did not get along with Mrs. Estrella, correct?
God knows I tried. I even tried to get, if you remember my testimony-
Yeah.
-despite the issues I had with Mrs. Estrella. I felt as though the work in that office warranted a higher position for the responsibility of that job, regardless of who had done that job. And I truly felt that in my heart. But I really do feel as though Estrella, Mrs. Estrella had high aspirations of that office.
And you didn't get along with Ms. Jissami?
I'm sorry, Ms. Jissami? Okay. I'm sorry, that's it. Well, I, I feel as though I did the best I could. I was told on more than one occasion by Mr. Sadi and by Cheryl Estrella to write, that I should write Christina up for her insolence with taxpayers.
And you didn't get along with Ms. Thomas?
I did get along with Ms. Thomas. I think that could have been resolved with the meeting.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I think we should take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I'll take a brief recess.
Unless, I guess it looks like you might have some-
Well, I just have a few more questions for Mr. Healy. I'd like to call him as a witness.
Yeah. We're not gonna allow that. He's done. You had, you had your chance.
That was just cross-examination.
Right. You had your chance to cross-examine.
I have a few, as my witness, I have a few questions.
Right. You had your opportunity to ask Mr. Healy any questions you can want him to ask, and he got him for quite a long time.
Well, I request fifteen minutes to ask him.
We're gonna take, we'll take a brief recess. Can we, we can reconvene? And I'm not sure exactly how we proceed from here. If you'd like to make a closing statement, Mr. Mueller?
Okay, I will.
And then, Mr. Jenkins?
I just have one housekeeping-
Okay.
-thing. When we were here, the first time, I, I gave Exhibit Four, which, which was Ms. Lawless's employment application. And when I handed it in, I, I realized that I didn't have the full package. So I'd like to substitute what I'm gonna give you for Ex, for Exhibit Four. And I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Chairman of the council. And you can, you can let counsel say whatever he wants to say. Sure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard a lot of testimony. I think that it's important for the board to start from the beginning, which is, in my mind, the contract that Ms. Lawless has with this town, that this town executes with Ms. Lawless. And that is a three-year contract that provides for termination only for cause and causes a high standard. Workplace disputes are not caused. A disagreement of style is not caused. Raised voices and slammed doors are not caused. There are really two points that I'd like to make with respect to the lack of cause. One is that none of the testimony today rises to the level of cause. And by today, I mean the testimony that we've heard in the three hearings so far. We have heard some, about some disagreements that people have had, some differences in personalities, some conflicts of personalities, and a difference in management style. But even Mr. Healy was clear in his testimony that with respect to the fundamental core functions, the job responsibilities that Ms. Lawless has to get, to be treasurer, collector of this town, she performed those duties well. And she performed them honorably and, and followed the law and this town's wishes. And that, I think, is, is so important because that's what this board hired her to do. To raise money for the town, to find uncollected taxes, to collect those taxes, to bring property into tax title that had, is, is behind in taxes, to create efficiencies in the office by going to lockbox and so forth. Ms. Lawless, the record is clear, saved this town money, not only in the operating budget, but also brought money to this town by collecting back taxes, something her predecessors had been unable to do. The, I think the, the next point I'd like to make is that the evidence that this board has brought into the public eye is, in some cases, been very weak, and in some cases has been totally, totally substanceless. And that's because it has been what we call inference piled up on inference, or hearsay on top of hearsay on top of hearsay, or allegations on top of allegations on top of allegations. I hope the Board of Selectment has a higher standard for itself than allegations of allegations of allegations. I think the problem goes back to two thousand and fourteen in the April hearing that this board had. The board has called it a meeting, and I have termed it a hearing as I just did. And the reason for that- And the reason for that is that today's proceedings, the last three hearings, this proceeding, has been built on allegations that were aired in the April 2014 hearing. That hearing was conducted in private. That hearing had no witnesses giving testimony, not even any documentary evidence, as I understand it, and not even the identity of Ms. Lawless's accusers were revealed in that hearing. And Ms. Lawless was asked questions about those allegations nevertheless, without notice, without notice of her accusers, without notice of the allegations, and was not given an adequate opportunity to know what those allegations were and to respond to those allegations, and was not given an adequate opportunity to bring testimony and evidence and witnesses and documentary evidence to this board at that time to refute the allegations. So, the problem is that the ship leaves April 2014 on the wrong course, and over time it is more and more off course. And as the year goes on, I think that the work environment for Ms. Lawless deteriorated precipitously, and the evidence is that the town did little or nothing to bring that ship back on course. Ms. Lawless wanted to work extra hours as her contract provides. She wanted to work after the close of business. She wanted to work on weekends. She didn't want to do that out of selfishness. She wanted to do that to serve the town. She would often run payroll, or felt like she had to run payroll, on the weekends because she didn't have enough time during the week. By implementing lockbox, there were great efficiencies and savings in the office, which freed up time for the people in her office to accomplish what needed to be done, and it still wasn't enough, especially after Ms. Estrella left. And in the interim between Ms. Estrella and Ms. Thomas's employment, there was a gap of time where Ms. Lawless was unable to perform all the work that needed to be done and was again prohibited from doing that. Now, in the notice of this hearing, there were several accusations made. And I think that it's important to notice and note that most of what she has accused of doing was done to serve the town and to further what she believed was her duties in her office. Looking at the April 30th, 2015 Notice of Disciplinary Hearing, item number two, for instance, turning over the passcodes. She did not do this, obviously, to harm the town. She did this to protect the town. She did this to serve her office in the way that she felt like she needed to do that. And in fact, the evidence is that her failure to turn over the passcodes did not harm the town at all. Mr. Healy testified that it may have delayed for a week or two certain functions, but in the end, the town was able to get substitute codes to do what it wanted to do with the substitute treasurer that it wanted to accomplish those tasks. Item number three is the lockbox program. Well, this board, despite its misgivings about the program, eventually voted for it, and there is no evidence that it is not a success. It's saved the town time and money and has increased tax collections. Number four, the allegations that she downloaded information onto a flash drive and took it out of Town Hall. Again, the town would, the board, or the sense that one gets from this allegation is that somehow she absconded with information. And all that Ms. Lawless wanted to do, and all that Ms. Lawless did do, is take that information home so she could conduct the business of her office from home, as she had been so loyally doing in the past. She wanted to not drop the ball at all, even though she had been placed on leave. And in fact, Mr. Healy testified that the town had done no investigation whatsoever into that information, and there is no allegation, even hearsay or otherwise, that suggests that the information that Ms. Lawless removed from the town is not secure and safe. Number five, we have talked about how her appearance at Town Hall on September, excuse me, March 25th of 2015 was to, again, conduct the business of the town. And I think even Mr. Healy, when we talk about the improper disposal of town real estate records, even Mr. Healy conceded that this was a non-issue, that these were public records, and that Mr. Sadek noted in his notes that Ms. Lawless had taken the time to get state approval for disposal of those records, and that it really was the responsibility of the head of maintenance and not Ms. Lawless, that those were disposed of in a way that was not to the town's liking. With regard to item number seven, taking a vacation without advising the Board of Selectmen as required, the evidence is that she was out for six hours on one day, on or about June 18th of 2014, and that she had, in fact, worked more than six hours, additional hours, that week to make up the time, but nevertheless put that down as vacation time. And with respect to item eight, again, this was hearsay. The allegations were hearsay and did not really support this allegation, number eight. Now, the importance of the March Ms. Lawless's request to Mr. Healy.
When was it dated, sir?
March of 2015. Ms. Lawless testified today that she asked Mr. Healy to intervene and help improve her working relationship with Ms. Thomas. Ms. Lawless reported to Mr. Healy the concerns that she had with Ms. Thomas's performance, and Mr. Healy gave nothing but positive reinforcement to Ms. Lawless that she was handling it properly. And I think this is significant because Ms. Lawless asked Mr. Healy to get the three of them together, and Mr. Healy did not do that. She wanted to get this resolved in a productive fashion and wanted the interpersonal situation to be improved. And when you consider that in the last week of Ms. Lawless's presence in Town Hall, no member of the Board of Selectmen nor Mr. Healy approached Ms. Thomas and Ms. Lawless with any effort at addressing Ms. Lawless's concerns about Ms. Thomas. All of the information was from, the accusations went from Ms. Thomas to Mr. Healy and/or the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Healy were concerned about Ms. Thomas's allegations and not Ms. Lawless's concerns about the working relationship with Ms. Thomas and the working environment in her office. That was a missed opportunity, I think, for the town to diffuse the situation and improve the situation. And I think that lack of effort on behalf of the town in that last week of her work puts the town and the board in a very difficult position to accuse Ms. Lawless of misconduct which rises to the level of cause, when in fact she requested help from the town to deal with this performance problem and was not given that help. I'd just close by emphasizing that cause is a high standard. Wouldn't it be a shame for this town to lose a woman who has brought efficiency and money to the town, not only in the operating budget, but also in the form of collected back taxes? That's what the treasurer's supposed to do. The personality issues can be resolved with the proper support of the town. And I would ask the board to disregard all of the exhibits that are hearsay, all of the exhibits that present this board with testimony that I cannot cross-examine, unfounded allegations, some of them wild allegations and speculation. That should be the board's basis for any personnel action against Ms. Lawless. And I would ask the board to bring Ms. Lawless back into an active status with the town, attack the personality issues that are the root of this problem, and restore Ms. Lawless to her normal day-to-day functions as treasurer collector of this town. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir, thank you. And I'll try to be concise as well. The starting point for this case is the employment agreement that was executed between Ms. Lawless and the town. This probably much the counsel and I agree on in this case. One thing that we will not agree on is the definition of cause. The contract provides that the treasurer, tax collector's employment under this contract may be terminated for cause. The contract doesn't even say, as many of your collective bargaining agreements do, that there must be just cause, but only cause, which I interpret to mean good cause, which means a valid reason demonstrating that the employee is not adequately able to perform her task. I would also disagree with counsel on the downplaying of the treatment that Ms. Lawless gave to her employees. And I think really that the personality of the defense here takes on the personality of Ms. Lawless, which was an unremitting attack, the way I heard the evidence, on virtually every employee that she dealt with. There was nobody that she worked closely with in Town Hall that she either respected or could get along with, and that came from her own testimony, disregarding everything else. I do think it's also important to focus on the April 2014 executive session. As you know, the board, from time to time, has to conduct executive sessions. The board is not able to give specific reasons in the notice of executive session because at that point in time, the board doesn't know a lot of the specifics. I asked questions of Ms. Lawless as to whether or not, when she spoke to her attorneys, her employees, whether or not she accorded them the kind of formality that we've had for the last three days of hearings. And of course, she said, "No." Why would I send them notice, have witnesses, warn testimony? Those are for hearings where there's going to be a property interest affected, like a termination hearing. That's why you have the formality intended to this hearing. It's entirely appropriate for the board to bring an employee in and to have frank discussions about performance issues. That was not a hearing. Ms. Lawless and counsel consistently referred to it as a hearing. No discipline came from that hearing, and it was conducted entirely in compliance with mass law. So, what do we have here? You really have two sets of employment issues here, those occurring before Ms. Lawless was placed on administrative leave, and those that occurred after she was placed on administrative leave. And I think that a good argument could be made that apart from all of the drama and the problems, that what occurred after she left is more serious than what occurred before she left. Now, there's been no argument that sending her home and placing her on administrative leave was for a good reason. You had employees complaining that Ms. Lawless was creating a hostile and belligerent work environment. We have an obligation as an employer to have our employees work in a safe place where they're not subject to harassment. It took a little while, but I think even Ms. Lawless acknowledged that sometimes her voice got raised, and maybe the door seemed like it's slim because it's loose on its hinges. These are just the kinds of things that the board attempted to address with her at the executive session in April. So, the board, the town, Mr. Healy, had every reason to place Ms. Lawless on administrative leave, to get her out of the workplace so that you could look at the situation. So, and I have to admire her, in a sense, Ms. Lawless's honesty on this issue. The first thing she does after being told not to come to work is to come to work to a place where she knew the employees were upset with her. She comes before office hours. Now, that may be something that she did on occasion, but she's told to stay away. She shows up early, and she starts downloading personal confidential employee information. Now, we've heard talk about remote access, so I understand that that's different than actually downloading these materials to your personal computer. She admits quite candidly that she downloaded information that had employee social security and dates of birth. Another file had, and Jessica testified to the same thing, another file had the same kind of information for retirees. That was wrong. Ms. Lawless had no right to come into work before work hours and download employees' information onto her flash drive to put on her personal computer. It then got worse because Mr. Healy, on at least three occasions, asked for the access codes for the bank accounts. The counsel downplayed the amount of time that it took for Mr. Healy to get the codes in place that he needed. I remember his testimony being that it took three weeks to four weeks to do that. Your memory will guide you as to what he said. But can you imagine an employee who's basically your CFO saying to a company, "Screw you! I'm not going to give you the codes that you need to run your business, and if it takes you three or four weeks to get that information, well, then that's just too bad for you." Can you imagine? So, we go back, and really, the notice of the charges is, as counsel said, what you have to go by. And I'm going to make a recommendation to you. You can take it or not take it. I would recommend that you not pursue charges six and seven. Charge six has to do with the improper disposition of the real estate records, and I don't believe that there is sufficient evidence to... that there is sufficient evidence to pursue that. And I would also recommend that you not pursue number seven, vacation day in June of 2014, for the same reason. But what that leaves you with, and I'm not going to repeat myself, paragraph one talks about Ms. Lawless's unprofessional conduct with employees. I think that's been substantiated both by her own testimony, the testimony from Jessica Thomas, and the other statements that you've received. You have evidence that Monica from the Maya actually said to the town that they wouldn't, she wouldn't deal with the town if Ms. Lawless continued to be the contact person. Ms. Lawless herself acknowledges that there was something going on there, so I believe that charge has been substantiated. Number two I've talked about. Number three is the lockbox program, and I would only say that there's some, there's a fine point to charge number three that Ms. Lawless does not address. The issue with charge number three is not whether or not the lockbox program is a good program, a bad program, whether it has saved money, or is something that the town should have done. The issue with the lockbox program is that Ms. Lawless told you that she had not entered into a signed agreement, and later acknowledged that she had. And she basically, in her testimony, the way I heard it, basically admitted the same thing. She tried to downplay the significance of it, that the contract she signed was voidable or cancelable on short notice. And again, it's how you remember that testimony, not how I remember it. Number three, I'm sorry, number four we've talked about, which was the downloading of the flash drive information. Number five, Ms. Lawless basically admits to that herself. And six and seven, I'm recommending that you not pursue. Number eight, you have received into evidence the email exchanges between the town and Ms. Lawless, in which the town just was not able to provide Maya with the information that was requested. I think the bottom line here is, you had, the town had good reason to order the administrative leave. Ms. Lawless did everything within her power to make that process as difficult as it can be, and that the charges with respect to her pre-administrative leave behavior have been substantiated. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess it sits in our laps now to decide how we move forward.
I did have one recommendation for an additional motion that you might want to consider, Mr. Chairman. I think you ought to consider that someone moved that the Board of Selectmen repeat and reaffirm its earlier vote to issue the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015. That you take a vote now in public session to reaffirm your earlier vote to issue that letter.
I have a motion from one of the selectmen, as read by Mr. Jenkins.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the vote on April 30th.
Go ahead, second.
Yes, second.
Have a motion made and seconded to reaffirm our vote that was done on April 30th.
Sir, just to be specific, I'm not sure if the vote was on April 30th.
No, I'll make a motion to reaffirm the...
Earlier vote.
Earlier vote.
Right, of Kate administrative.
No, I'm sorry. The motion deals with the notice of disciplinary hearing, which is April 30th, not the...
Do we have that in front of us? Do you have that?
You don't.
Thank you.
Well, I can give you my comment.
Yeah, that would be fine. All right, entertain, I'll actually make the motion to reaffirm the vote on or about April 30th, 2015, of a notice of disciplinary hearing.
I'll second that one.
Motion made and seconded. Is he exact language?
That I just said?
That you just said.
As I just said.
As you just said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion's adopted.
I need to have that, like, in front of me so I can read.
Oh, it's okay, sure, sure. Okay. So yet again, now it seems to be in our laps to decide how we move forward, and we'll begin the deliberations. Mr. Sager?
Well, I think, I think we ought to go down and cover each one of these charges, talk a little bit about it.
Okay.
And if you want, I can personally start on number one.
Would you like to comment, Mr. Pacheco, in between his...
I'll imagine if I have to.
You'll kick me, huh? When you go and you look at the charges, you talk about the different employees that we've had here in Town Hall that had difficulties with Diane and Lawless. If you go back in time, it started, basically started with the prior treasurer, tax collector. And this really rings in my mind, because after Diane was hired, Anita Holland, who was a longtime treasurer, who actually replaced me, I was treasurer for 17 years, and Anita replaced me. When I retired, Anita was willing to stay on for about a month, month and a half, to help Diane out, get accustomed. And it was almost within the first week that I was getting calls from Diane where she couldn't work with Anita. At my house, after five o'clock, it was like, "What's going on here?" And I would, I actually talked to Anita a number of times, and Anita said, "Oh, I just can't work with this one." She says, "I'm just going to use up my vacation. I'm sorry, but I'm leaving." That was the first thing that we ran into. And I, I'm a hands-on selectman, I go into the Town Hall two or three times a week. And so I know what's going on. I talk, when I go into the Town Hall, because I'm retired, I go and I talk to every office, every employee, I say, "How you doing, what's going on?" And it was, it was a pattern that everybody was having difficulty with Diane, which was very troubling to me. You know, one of the most important things that I learned a long time ago, I was a manager for many years for the government, and your employees make you, and you have to have a good relationship with your employees, because in essence, they make you. And that's one of the major things that I have issues with, that's what caused, in my mind, this turmoil that was going on with these employees. I know that at one point Diane, in her testimony, talked about when Cheryl left, Cheryl Ostrow left to go to work in the town clerk's office, and she was without an employee for a couple of weeks. Well, we had a posting job in the clerk's office, and Cheryl, being an employee, a number of employees, a couple of employees put in for that job, as well as outside people in the, Cheryl just wanted to get out of working in the treasurer's office. And Cheryl got the job there, and we immediately posted the vacancy, and an internal person put in for the job. And we interviewed, when I say "we," the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, and the department head that has the vacancy always interviews. And one of the employees that put in for the job, we had selected, she had worked for the town for two or three years, she had a financial background, working in banks and so forth, and we hired her, we moved her in. We did this on a, I believe it was either Wednesday or Thursday, and on Friday morning, excuse me, Monday morning, I get a call, I was personnel board chair. She says to me, "Paul, I'm not taking the job." "What do you mean you're not taking the job? This is a good opportunity for you to, at some point, you know, become an assistant treasurer-collector, whatever." She says, "I can't." And I'm going to tell you exactly what she said. She said to me, I called downstairs and talked to Diane on Friday, and Diane says to me, "If you think this is going to be a cakewalk, you're mistaken." And she said, and this is what the lady told me, and she says, "I can't take the job." And she backed out of the job. We awarded her the job, and she backed out of it. So what did we have to do? Now we had to go back and interview again, and that's when Jessica was picked up. But these are the things that trouble me as an administrator, as a selectman, as a longtime government manager, because I had three offices that I managed in southeastern Massachusetts for the feds. And you have to have employees that trust you and are willing to work with you to make you successful. That's my feeling in this one, and I didn't see that happen.
If I could make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You should, and it's hard to take everything you know out of your, out of your head. And one of the reasons why the courts have set up these kinds of hearings is because the courts have said that the local boss, if you will, is closer to the situation and knows. But your situation, your vote here tonight should not be based on things that may have happened that are not before the board, not evidence before the board, so you should, you should. I understand, but you know, relations with other employees and things like that, just try to focus on what's the evidence in the case.
Focus on what we discussed.
Which you've heard, okay.
I make an objection on that basis, to testimony that is not, has not been evidence in this hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I move on to number one?
I have no comment. I move that the Board of Selectmen find that it has been demonstrated that Ms. Lawless has committed the acts alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015, and further that the commission of those acts violated the employment agreement between the town and Ms. Lawless, requiring her to perform all the duties and functions of the town treasurer as set in the notice.
Are you restricting that to paragraph one?
Yes.
Have a motion made. Seconded?
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, as read by Selectman Pacheco, concerning number one on the disciplinary hearing list. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We agree that number one, the motion passes that number one, we agree that she did. We agree that she did.
Okay, so then you should move on to number two.
Number two, correct. I just wanted to make sure everybody was done speaking.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Selectmen find that it has been demonstrated that Ms. Lawless has committed the acts alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015, and further that the commission of those acts violated the employment agreement between the town and Ms. Lawless, requiring her to perform all the duties and functions of the town treasurer as set out in the notice. War number two.
I'll second that.
Have a motion made and seconded, as read by Selectman Pacheco on article number two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We find that in number two, she did commit those acts.
I move that the Board of Selectmen find that it has been demonstrated that Ms. Lawless has committed the acts alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015, and further that the commission of those acts violated the employment agreement between the town and Ms. Lawless, requiring her to perform all the duties and functions of the town treasurer as set out in the notice on number three.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, as read by Selectman Pacheco on article three. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We find that Ms. Lawless did commit those acts that she was accused of on article three.
I move that the Board of Selectmen find that it has been demonstrated that Ms. Lawless has committed the acts alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015, and further that the commission of those acts violated the employment agreement between the town and Ms. Lawless, requiring her to perform all of the duties and functions of the town treasurer as set out in the notice on number four.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, as read by Selectman Pacheco, concerning article four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We find that article four, she committed those acts that we were accused of.
I move that the Board of Selectmen find that it has been demonstrated that Ms. Lawless has committed the acts alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015, and further that the commission of those acts violated the employment agreement between the town treasurer and Ms. Lawless, requiring her to perform all the duties and functions of the town treasurer as set out in the notice on number five.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, concerning article five, as read by Selectman Pacheco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We find that article five, Ms. Lawless did commit those acts she's accused of.
We make a motion that we do not consider item six.
Or seven?
I'll do one at a time, item six.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to not move on article six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Make a motion that we do not consider item seven.
Second.
Make a motion, we have a motion made and seconded not to consider article seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? On to number eight.
I move that the Board of Selectmen find that it has been demonstrated that Ms. Lawless has committed the acts alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing dated April 30th, 2015, and further that the commission of those acts violated the employment agreement between the town and Ms. Lawless, requiring her to perform all the duties and functions of the town treasurer as set out in the notice on number eight.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, as read by Selectman Pacheco on article eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We find that Ms. Lawless did commit, and she's accused of, in article eight. Before we move on, I would just like to say something as the chairman of the board, that if in fact, on Ms. Lawless's application, it stated, as she stated, that she had been fired from Bridgewater, we wouldn't be having this conversation here right now. In a million years, she wouldn't have been hired in this, in this town. So I felt we were misled on our application of what. Second, I'd like to say that we have employees that have been in town a long time. Anita Holland, for whatever reason, said she was testy, Diane cues her in not liking her in her letters, and Anita worked here a long time. Dan Santos, another longtime employee. Cheryl Ostrow, leaves the treasurer's office and moves on very successfully to the town clerk's office. Christine Giassami, I think, I'm trying to be led to believe that she was incompetent, when in fact, I look at the $533,000 that was collected out of her office, she did a lion's share of the work. I think Mrs. Ostrow collected like 11, and Ms. Ferrer collected some, Diane collected two, to the tune of $1,032, and Mr. Giassami collected the rest. I mean, it's documented. I look at Jessica Thomas, and I keep hearing this word, "time." "Time, I didn't have time to do this, I didn't have time to do that." Jessica Thomas walked into that office with virtually no experience, and has run it flawlessly by herself, with no help, no complaining, no nothing. The job gets done perfectly well. The tax collector's side is being done very efficiently. No problems, no anything. These people require very little support, the job is getting done. I'm pleased that the chairman of the board, the way this town is being managed by those departments right now. So, and with that being said, that's what I have to say. Any other comments?
By the recommendation of counsel, I am not, I'm not speaking, I'm just going by the evidence that was presented throughout these examples. the evidence that was presented throughout these examples and following Mr. Jenkins' lead. I move that the board of selectmen have found that Ms. Diane Lawless has committed the alleged, the acts as alleged in the notice of disciplinary hearing, and that these acts constitute a violation of her employment agreement, that the acts constitute cause for her termination, and that the chairman be authorized to prepare a notice to Ms. Lawless consistent with the vote.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded by Selectman Pacheco to terminate Ms. Lawless. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? My emotion and approval of the board, Ms. Lawless is terminated from the town free term.
When she receives her notice, sir?
When she receives her notice.
You do not set a date?
No.
Right. Well, there, there are legal requirements that we have to comply with in terms of the termination, it may take a couple of days to do, so we'll do that, but I think you should leave it to the chair, the town administrator and I to take care of those details.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, it's been covered by me.
No, it's in there.
I will make a motion for ju...
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting's over.